Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Adjustment. Today is Wednesday, October 22nd, 2025, and it's 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJASA 10:4-6 at sect. of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Roll call. Mr. Berkowitz?
Here.
Ms. DeCros.
Here.
Mr. Jopscowicz.
Here.
Mr. Messarella.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Reddy is not here. Mr. Willins.
Here.
Chairwoman Graniani.
Present.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our board engineer, Mr. Lamontowicz.
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chadwick, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Mr. Lamontowicz, do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Would any member of the public like to speak about something not on our agenda this evening? I see none. Application 24:38 Islamic Community Cultural Center, 879 South Bevick Road, Block 764, Lot 64, Zone R1-RW, preliminary and final site plan with CD variance to construct a four-story, 29-unit housing facility.
We're down to three stories.
Okay.
Nice to see everyone this evening. May I be seated?
You may.
For the record's purpose, my name is Stephen Sheppas. I'm the applicant's attorney. Where we last left off, we were completing the testimony of Warkar Kokar. He's seated here to my right. I believe the board had asked some questions, and then from there there were some questions that people were lined up to ask some questions. So he's here this evening. I remind him he's still under oath.
Sure. Just for the record, raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
So, we're going to follow the same procedure that we have followed with respect to other witnesses. There is an attorney here who represents some neighbors of the application. We're going to allow that attorney to ask his questions first because it may be more efficient that way as his questions may be the same questions that some members of the public have. Once that attorney asks his questions, then we'll open up the witness to questions from the audience. Okay? So, Mr. Mills, if you could, if you have any questions, I'm sure you do, but if you do have any questions, if you could just state your appearance for the record and then add.
Yes. Just. Oh, well. Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Mills from Morristown, New Jersey. I continue to represent the Trevetti and Kret families with respect to this application. My technical assistant is endeavoring. Yeah, okay, maybe that's the best. Anyway, good evening also, Mr. Sheppas.
Take the mic out of the stand so we can hear.
Yeah, it'll be a little better. It'll be better for you to speak loud.
Oh, sure.
You can take it out of this stand, please. No, no.
No, at the top.
Okay, all right. He got it. Oh, great.
Oh, he's got it. He's used that before.
Okay.
There we go.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Kokar, if I may. Mr. Kokar, you are affiliated with the Islamic Burial Services Association?
Officially, I'm primarily associated with Islamic Community Cultural Center. IBSA is more my dad's wheelhouse.
What position do you hold with the Islamic Cultural, Community Cultural Center?
Executive Director.
And what is the relationship between the Islamic Services Burial Center, or Islamic Burial Services Association, rather, and the Islamic Community Cultural Center?
So, like I mentioned last time, as part of my testimony, ICCC, Islamic Community Cultural Center, is a DBA of Islamic Burial Services Association. IBSA was the original purchaser of the property at 879 South Bevick Road. After the property was purchased, the DBA was created to go and run the Islamic Center.
For purposes of streamlining my questioning, Mr. Sheppas, do you plan to call Mr. Kokar's father?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Then we'll take a look at some of the other questions that I had. As I understand, as I understand it, Mr. Kokar, the application now speaks to 28 residential apartment units. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
You're not certain?
Well, it's also like I mentioned, right? Predominantly, my role is in ICCC. A lot of the questions that are related to the construction of the new expansion, my dad would probably be able to answer.
Well, the applicant is the Islamic Community Cultural Center, is it not?
I believe it's IBSA.
When I read the application, it stated that the Cultural Center was the applicant.
I mean, it's effectively the same, but my role here, as far as giving my testimony, is the operations of ICCC.
All right. Can you tell us how many total new residents are proposed for the residential component?
By new residents, are you asking how many have stepped forward to express interest?
Let me back up. You're seeking approval from this board to construct on property owned by the Islamic Burial Services Association, yet property operated by the Islamic Community Cultural Center, 28 residential apartment units. Is that correct?
Yes.
How many residents do you anticipate to take occupancy in those residential units?
I'm going to defer that question to my dad. He'd probably know better.
How about the following? Will apartments be used by mosque staff or open to the general public? Or will there, sorry, that's a compound question. Who do you anticipate to occupy these apartments?
I'm going to defer that to my dad. He'd be able to answer way better than I could.
Are you familiar with the parking arrangements?
Currently, or what they expect to be in the future?
How many parking spaces are proposed if this application is approved?
I'm not sure offhand. My dad probably will answer that. Just anything really related to the ongoing, upcoming construction, or how it would look after the construction is done, or during the course of construction, my dad can probably handle that.
I'm trying to understand.
Right, right over there.
May we have this witness answer the questions first, and then I'm sure they have other witnesses to come forward?
It's not.
Please be patient.
So, everything we, everything that's being said today is being picked up by the recording. That will later on be turned into a transcript for use if someone objects to the decision of this board. Okay? If the transcript is unreadable, because there's comments from the audience that make the transcript unable to be produced in a legible format, that creates a lot of issues with respect to whatever decision this board makes. So, your comments, as well-intended as they may be from the audience, are not helpful to this board to have a clean record and make a decision based upon the evidence that's before them. So, I would urge you not to make comments from the audience. Thank you.
Plus, the attorney said the father will be called.
Excuse me?
The attorney said the father will be called.
He will be called.
He's sitting right there.
Just, they might not have heard that.
Maybe, respectfully, it may help sharpen my questioning if I could have a proffer as to what the purpose of Mr. Kokar's testimony was at the last meeting.
Mr. Kokar gave testimony about the operations of the facility as it exists today.
All right. We can focus on that, then. How many, I'll call them, what do you, participants, how many religious affiliates does the mosque have?
So, religious affiliates is a bit of a loose term. In essence, anyone can really go to any mosque, generally speaking, as far as our major services, which are on Fridays. We net about between 150 to 180 individuals in the first service and the second service an hour later. It's a little bit lower than that, maybe around 80 to 100.
What is the parking situation that pertains, as it pertains to the current attendance?
So, right now, we, on average, typically fill up the lot, and we have volunteers, myself included, that stand in the, in the lot to assist if there was, you know, double parking that can be arranged very quickly, or, you know, facilitating people coming in and out. In addition to that, Preston Road across the street is available for use.
I take it from that that you are then aware that current mosque operations already result in overflow parking onto residential streets?
Yes.
Okay. How often do attendees park on neighboring streets during the Friday prayers or events?
Typically, for Friday prayers, usually, there's almost always parking on Preston. Beyond that, I don't really have visibility into.
Have you been made aware of any complaints or notices from residents regarding the parking situation?
We have spoken to Parsippany Police Department as they relayed, you know, issues and complaints from residents that are in the area. We've dealt with them in the most efficient and productive way possible. And we have a pretty open-door policy, right? We're more than welcome to listen to any grievances or issues otherwise that might be presented by residents that live on Preston or any of the surrounding streets.
But you do acknowledge that the current parking is already insufficient to meet the existing needs, do you not?
In regards to our congregation, we can accommodate our congregation with the combination of our parking lot and Preston Street.
Yes. So, the congregation, and thank you for giving me the correct word, is accommodated only by use of overflow parking in the, on the local residential street. Is that correct?
Generally, yes.
And then perhaps you can explain to us how reducing the parking will alleviate, rather than worsen, this problem?
So, like I mentioned in the testimony last, last time, the sort of nature of our, you know, arrangement that we have, and, you know, the transient nature of, you know, our specific congregants, right, and their ability to really go pray anywhere else, kind of creates an organic cap as far as, you know, total number of attendees. You know, if you put yourself in a position of someone who wants to come and pray on Friday, you come in and the parking lot is full, and the nearest spot is like a quarter mile down Preston, you are in more than, more than likely, probably just going to go pray somewhere else, right? And there is, you know, three or four other places of worship that can accommodate those individuals. And I would anticipate, you know, if construction started and parking was diminished by a certain amount, that natural organic cap would just get lowered, and, you know, whatever arrangement exists now would essentially continue in a similar fashion.
Perhaps you could refresh me. How many parking spaces are being provided specifically for the new residential apartments?
My dad can answer that.
How would the center plan on preventing apartment tenants from competing with spaces used by worshippers?
My dad can answer that.
Will the residents be prohibited from parking on nearby residential streets?
Look, anything related to the actual residence of the building, you know, the new proposed building, I think you can probably just punt that to the next witness.
Do you have any specific plans to mitigate the parking situation once the number of parking spaces, if this is approved, are reduced?
Again, I think my dad can probably handle the logistics of, you know, what happens after it's approved, or...
When you speak about the number of congregants, let me back up. I'll withdraw that. How many services are typically on a Friday?
We have two services.
Thank you. And the attendance at each is about equal or not, not equal?
No, the first one generally gets more, and the second one gets less.
What are the times of those services?
These days, 2:00 PM and 3:00 PM.
And do both services result in the need to have overflow parking on the residential streets?
So, the first service, generally, we see Preston Road being used. The second, I know there's open spots in our parking spot by the time the, the service finishes. Now, whether or not the congregants come and, you know, opt to just park on Preston regardless of the situation in the parking lot, that's something that, you know, it's kind of out of our control.
What specific complaints have been communicated to you about the residential situation, meaning the residents of Parsippany, not the new residents?
Mostly, mostly blocking of driveways.
How about blocking mailboxes?
Yeah, I think it's, it's in that scene, yeah.
How about concerns for emergency vehicle access on the local streets?
The police department has mentioned that, and we've, you know, worked with them, and, you know, I believe we've, we've closed down parallel parking on one side of Preston Road specifically for that reason.
Would you agree with me that the project that's proposed actually increases the then, the intensity of the use of the site while reducing parking capacity?
You're asking for the, during the duration of construction, or after the construction would be complete?
After, if approved, do you agree that the project as proposed would increase the burden on the local residents?
I'm going to defer that to my dad.
You spoke about, to some degree, about the religious practice of body washing, did you not?
Yes.
I had some questions in that regard. What I understood or took from the discussion was that the body washing took place in a, in a box truck. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that truck currently is no longer stored on the premises. Also correct?
I don't believe so.
And is it not true that that truck, when used, is not connected to municipal sewer?
Again, my dad handles most of the IBSA burial-related stuff, so he'd be able to answer that, along with any other line of questioning around the truck.
I need to make a record here, so I'm going to continue. Are you aware of any biohazard materials disposed of directly from the truck onto, onto the property?
I'm not aware of anything pertaining to the truck.
Well, when, are you familiar with the body washing practice itself?
Yes.
Maybe you could describe that for us in some detail.
Well, on a high level, it's essentially just, you know, water that's been, you know, washed over the body and, you know, wiped down, right?
So, it contains skin particles? Is that fair?
I would imagine a body would have skin.
Does it contain, does the wastewater contain bodily fluids?
I would imagine, yes.
Has the health department ever inspected the inside of the box truck?
I don't know.
Did you obtain clearance from the health department before embarking on this practice?
I don't have those details.
Can you tell us what measures are in place to ensure that bodily fluids from deceased individuals do not contaminate the surrounding area?
I don't have those details.
Do you know if the facility, meaning the Cultural Center property, is zoned to permit a mortuary-type practice?
I don't have those details.
Do you know if there's a funeral director's license employed during the process of this body washing and burial?
I don't have those details.
Do you know if the truck is, is licensed as a, or registered as a mobile mortuary unit?
I don't have those details.
You would agree with me, however, that while religious practices are protected, they must still comply with public health laws, correct?
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Are you aware that other mosques perform body washing in properly licensed mortuary facilities?
I am not super aware of the practices of other mosques.
There's nothing that would prevent the process from occurring in a property-licensed facility, is there?
By property license, exactly what do you mean?
A facility that meets health code standards for the preparation of a body for burial.
Okay. So, what was your question?
There's nothing in Islamic law that prohibits the use of such a facility for body preparation, a license.
No, you can, any, anywhere that you can wash a body, you can wash a body. It's all good.
Just some questions about the truck. How old is it?
I don't have those details.
Is it repurposed from a prior use?
I don't have those details.
Does it have refrigeration or temperature controls in the box?
I don't have those details.
How is the truck cleaned following use?
I don't have those details.
Are the persons performing the washing certified in the handling of human remains?
I don't have those details.
Have they been trained in infectious disease control?
I don't have those details.
Have any of them received OSHA or biohazard training?
I don't have those details.
I think that covers everything. Thank you, board members.
Before we get to members of the public, I just want to follow up on some of your testimony. I just want to make sure I'm clear on it. Did you testify that in the past you have eliminated parallel parking on Preston? Was that your testimony?
I believe I did, yeah.
Okay. Can you explain what you, what exactly you mean by that?
So, I know the police came and spoke to us in regards to the parking issue, and this was a while ago, right? And I think one of the agreements that we came up with was that all the parking would be on one side.
And how have you gone about attempting to enforce that?
So, like I mentioned last time, you know, we have volunteers. I know my brother stand on Preston and specifically keep an eye on all the traffic coming in, ensuring that everything is, you know, on one side as much as possible.
Okay. And do you do that at every, on every Friday?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So, on every Fri, your testimony is that on every Friday?
Yeah.
Some member of ICCC, either you or your brother, typically your brother?
A, a member associated with a mosque, right?
Okay. Associated with the mosque.
Yeah.
Is out on Preston.
Yes.
Directing congregants to only park on one side of Preston.
Yes.
Is that your testimony?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Now, we're going to, you have one? Okay.
Yeah, so, I believe going along those same lines, you said you have somebody out there making sure to park on one side or the other. But then you made the comment before that if there's spaces open in the parking lot for the second service and people are still parking on Preston, I believe you said it was out of your control to stop them from that. But if you're, have somebody stationed out there from the mosque, they should be able to say, hey, there's a parking in the parking lot. So, it is in your control at that point, is I guess my point, right?
I suppose in some sense, right? But, you know, typically, like I said, with the first service, we can say almost, with almost full certainty that the lot is going to fill up, right? So, the question really is, do you want, you know, person, you know, congregant number, you know, 12 parking on Preston, or congregant number 86 parking on Preston? And because of that, you know, with, you know, the extra logistical headache of, you know, stopping someone, having them turn around and go into the lot, because, you know, it's a U-turn on a one-way, you know, we've essentially just accepted like, okay, yeah, can park on one side of Preston, and anyone who wants to go into the lot can go into the lot, and at the end, it's all sort of a wash.
So, I guess my opinion on that is, you could see the people that have an issue with the parking.
Right.
I think that would probably, maybe inconveniencing somebody by having to make a U-turn would probably save you a lot of headaches with the neighborhood.
Yeah. I mean, if the lot filled up and, or the lot didn't fill up all the way and we didn't have any issues on Preston, you know, but I think either way, you're going to have people parking on Preston.
My, my understanding, you had an agreement with the Methodist Church for a certain number of parking places. Is that still in place?
No, it's not.
So, with that not being there, that exacerbates the street parking. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Chair, just a couple of questions.
Please.
We established that the Friday, that the Friday services are at 2:00 and 3:00. How long are the services?
Typically, we'll start at 2:00 and we'll wrap up around 2:35, maybe 2:40. It does vary. It's not a hard stop. And then the same with, with the 3:00 o'clock one, about 30, 35 minutes.
Okay. If people are coming to the second service, being aware that there might be some stragglers from the first service, do you think they'd go directly to Preston and not even try the lot?
It's certainly possible, but usually at that point, Preston is also kind of a logjam as cars are exiting out. And, and again, it's not 100%, right? But generally, because of that, people tend to gravitate more towards the lot for the second, second one, just not having to deal with oncoming traffic.
Okay. And you had said in your prior testimony that there was an area of seating in the worship hall for, there's, there's an area for chairs for, I'll say, physically challenged people, whether it be aged or, how many chairs are there?
Maybe 20, but we can always pull out more, right?
That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you. I have one more question. I'm not, my, my fault for not knowing the answer to this, but I'll ask you. The current lot size you have and the current facility, if you were not building these units, 29 units, what is, what is that space right now where the, where the apartments are scheduled, are planned to be built? What is, is that open space now?
It's, it's the parking lot.
It's all parking lot?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? I have a question. You mentioned that during the service, your congregants only park on one side of Preston.
As far as I know, yes.
Are they, when your lot is full, are they also parking in the street on South Bevick, or are they going to Quimby also?
So, I'm typically stationed in the parking lot, and usually when the lot fills up, right, we close it off in the front, and we tell people to not park on South Bevick because that's illegal, right? We tell them to go on the street, on Preston. Sometimes, they drive over to Quimby and make the walk back over down South Bevick. I've seen that before. But, you know, we, we typically don't give that granularity of, of direction, other than just don't park on South Bevick because it's illegal.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
The number of people that attend the Friday services, that's the best estimate currently?
Yes.
What was the number of people attending three years ago? Were you there?
I was there, yeah. I mean, we've gradually been, you know, increasing our numbers, and I, I think we have plateaued around these numbers that I gave. I couldn't tell you really exactly where we were three years ago. I mean, it was on the heels of COVID. People were still kind of iffy. People were still kind of figuring out that we existed. I'd imagine it was less, but, you know, I couldn't give you a solid number.
How about going forward? Do you have a plan?
In terms of parking, or?
In time, in terms of number of.
I mean, you know, like I mentioned, you know, there is kind of an organic ceiling, you know, when it comes to just being able to logistically get into and out of the building to your car. I would imagine we'd have more churn, you know, some folks move away, some people come in. But, you know, I, it's hard for me to go and decisively say we're going to get more people, just because I already have seen specific cases where people that used to come to our mosque regularly no longer come. They sort of just go somewhere else because, you know, we close a lot, we tell them to, you know, park on one side, and then, you know, it's like a 10-minute walk then, and they're just like, yeah, we're going to go somewhere else. So...
Two graders.
Pardon?
It's two graders.
Essentially, yeah, yeah.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the testimony given by this gentleman this evening?
This is your time to ask questions of this witness on the testimony that he has given either tonight or the last time he testified. There, if you have questions not related to the testimony of this witness, there's probably going to be a different witness that you would ask those questions to. So, if you could line up at the microphone, identify yourself, spell your last name, and just tell us where you live.
Hello. My name is Burton Eisenberg, and I live in Parsippany on Parrot Drive. I remember three months ago, when you last met, you seemed to have a little bit more information about the preparation for burial service. At that time, you stated to someone's question that the wastewater or the used water generated during the washing generated during the washing is, is put down or is transferred to the sanitary sewer. Now, you stated you didn't know, so the question is, which one is it? If you're taking, or if the service is taking the wastewater and dumping it down the sanitary sewer without treating at all, you don't know how many different bacteria is contained in the wastewater? And you don't, it sounds like there is no permit.
What's your question?
Okay, the question, then, well, I'm repeating first what he said. Do you know what the, what the wastewater contains?
A, as an effluent of the body washing process, is that?
Yes.
Yeah.
I have a pretty good idea myself.
Well, what's, the question is, do you know what the wastewater contains?
I'd imagine, you know, products that were on the body, but I can't decisively say on a scientific level. I mean, you know, as, as far as the, the previous testimony, you know, I'm generally aware of the practice, right, from a religious perspective on how it works, and, uh, you know, aware enough to understand that, yeah, the truck itself connects to electricity, it, you know, connects to the municipal sewage line, but beyond that, right, you know, beyond those high-level details that, you know, you pick up just from being in the area, a lot of those questions, I'll just tell you right now, my dad would probably have give you way better answers.
So.
So the answer is not to a scientific level, but I am generally aware that there are, you know, byproducts of, you know, human remains that are part of that effluent.
Well, let me enlighten you. There are thousands of different bacteria.
This is your chance to ask questions. If you have a statement, there'll be a different night
Okay.
when you can make statements either in supportive or in opposition to the application.
Okay. Regarding the parking situation, you stated that the apartments that are proposed will be constructed on existing parking spaces. I believe last time you also stated that there would be 28 or 29 parking spaces, one for each apartment. So, the problem is that it seems to me, and please, please enlighten me, that after the proposed apartments are built, there is now many, many less parking spaces for congregants. Is that correct?
I would imagine, yes, there would be fewer parking spaces after the construction.
Okay, so in that case, you have a bigger problem of congregants parking outside of the, your area. And the public, in other words, in the surrounding areas. You now have, you can, you now create a bigger problem than you have now. How are you supposed to accommodate all the vehicles?
So, like I mentioned, um, you know, there is that organic cap that, you know, I'm going to trademark now, right, where, uh, you know, as the number of parking spaces diminishes, the, you know, number of congregants that come and use those parking spaces also naturally gets depressed. So, uh, you know, we will continue doing what we, uh, continue what we do now, and, uh, you know, deal with it as we deal with it.
Okay, so in other words, you don't know how you're going to accommodate these people. You're assuming, you're making assumptions. They're guesses. You don't know. Am I correct?
I, I don't know how to answer that question. Maybe, I don't know. I like hearing you speak, but it's just, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking, right? I answered it to the best of my ability.
How are you going to accommodate the vehicles? Let's assume it's the same number of vehicles as now. How would you accommodate these vehicles in your parking lot if you have so many less spaces for, for outside congregants? Without directing them to the surrounding areas?
Like I said, we already direct them to street parking.
But now you're going to have many more because you have less parking spaces. Instead of more parking spaces, you have less parking spaces. So how will you accommodate these people who come with their cars?
Like I said, the same way we do it now, right?
Only worse.
As people come in, we will place them in a parking spot. Once the lot is full, we will direct people elsewhere.
Only worse. You creating, you're taking a bad situation and you're making it worse by taking away some of the existing parking.
You've asked, you've asked your question, and he's given the answer.
Thank you.
Could I just ask one thing? So, you, you keep saying that it will organically correct itself because of, the people will come, there'll be traffic, whatever. But this room has a capacity number on it, right? You could use the same logic. You don't need a capacity number because people will come, it'll be crowded, it'll be full, and people will just organically go away. Right?
Well, I think it's a little bit different, right?
It is different, I agree, but it's kind of the same logic. You think it might, but if someone feels they need to pray and this is close, they might find a way to keep coming.
Yeah, but, you know, if you look at it logistically, right, you know, at that point, let's say the lot is closed, right? Your nearest spot is a ten-minute walk, right? If they're just coming to pray, generally speaking, people don't invest ten minutes of walking time to just come and pray, right? Usually, again, this is based on my, what I've seen, right? They will just drive five minutes to the other Parsippany mosque, right, by the firehouse, and just pray there. Or they'll drive ten minutes to, you know, Rockaway or Buntan or Lake Hiwatha, and they'll just pray there. So, I mean, yeah, theoretically, you know, what you're saying, you know, could end up happening. Uh, but in practice, I, you know, uh, I, I have essentially seen the contrary.
Okay.
Ma'am, do you have a question?
Yes.
Could you state your name?
Yes, my name's Joanne Fisher. I live at 872 South Beverick Road, right across the street. They're my neighbors. I want to know, do you have activities in the middle of the night? I see cars going in and out of the driveway all night long.
Define middle of the night.
Well, all night, 2:00, 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM.
Generally.
There's cars and I, there's traff-, not traffic, that's the wrong word. There are cars going in and out of the driveway, and I was wondering if the mosque is open 24 hours.
Uh, so, it's not really open. We lock the doors after, a half hour after our last prayer, um, except for.
What time is that?
So these days, it's at 7:35, so usually around 8:05, we, these days. Uh, in the winter time, yeah, it's about eight. Uh, in the summertime, the last prayer is around 10:15, 10:20, so usually by 11:00, everybody's out. Uh, in Ramadan, which is maybe, you know, once or twice a year, in the last 10 days of Ramadan, we'll have an all-night program. That's really the only time you'll see like an actual mosque activity. But I think I know what you're referring to, right? I have at some times seen just random cars come in and they just park there, and, you know, I went there once, it was a teenage couple, asked them what they were doing, they kind of just drove off. Uh, just kind of the reality of having a big lot that's in the woods, you kind of attract folks that just want a place of privacy, so. Uh, I wish I could do something about it, but, uh, you know, it's out, out of budget right now, and, you know, maybe we'll.
Well, I'd like to graciously disagree with you. There's a lot of activity at night. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, sir, do you have a question?
Yes.
State your name.
My name is Davul Shah.
Tell us where you live.
I'm at 86 South Parrot Mill Road. Thank you. How long have you been operations manager for?
Um, ICCC opened, uh, December of 2020, January 2021, early, it was around that, New Year time.
Cool. Uh, and when, when was the first time you heard the complaints about the parking, the accessiveness, the blocking of the driveways?
I want to say we noticed it, uh, maybe a little over a year into operations, once a lot of the COVID restrictions were up and, and the congregation started a surge, you know.
So about 2021?
Um, if anything, it'd probably be, you know, at the end of 2021, uh, at the end of, uh, probably middle of 2022, if I had to say, right?
So technically, you've heard residents complain over and over from 2021 to now. Is that a correct fact?
Well, you know, complaining, right, can, can be a lot of things, right? Uh, you know, somebody complained that somebody parked in front of their driveway while having everything open. So, I mean, yeah, in a sense, you know, people, people, we've had an open dialogue with our neighbors since 2022 and earlier even.
My concern here is, and I'm in operations, I manage operations as well, but it appears that over the course of four years, the pain has gotten worst for the residents. Do you see the same?
I think our numbers have gone up, and, uh, as part of that, right, generally these instances of people, uh, you know, parking in a, inconsiderate way will, will naturally go up, and as a result, yeah, complaints will go up.
So, how is this friendly to the community? I know you were speaking the last time around, community building, building the trust, but it's gone worse for the residents, so how are you planning to build that trust back? Because apparently that's why most of the members are here, because it's been broken.
Yeah, I mean, I've said time and time before, right, you know, we, we are, you know, very open to, you know, any of our neighbors who want to come in, speak to us, right? Even last time, uh, spoke to one or two individuals that, um, you know, I believe spoke to the last witness. You know, it's, it's, uh, it starts with, you know, open dialogue, open conversation. Anytime, uh, you know, we catch wind of, you know, a neighbor, you know, having the driveway blocked or mailbox blocked, we immediately, you know, call the police, tell them to call the police, tell them to tow the car, right? We, we have, uh, you know, very low tolerance for members of, uh, associated with our mosque going in and behaving that way, right? And, you know, these things, as, you know, these instances happen more and more often and more and more visibly, you know, we hope that it creates, you know, a reverberating effect where, you know, the next congregant will maybe think twice about doing that.
But it hasn't happened to date, is that correct?
Well, you know, I can imagine there's been people that, you know, uh, are no longer doing that because of those things, right? So it's hard to go and measure what hasn't happened. That's the thing, right?
As an operations manager, over the course of four-year and four-year trend, my hope would be. So do you have any measurements that you follow, data that you follow, complaints that you get to see what the reaction is from the communities and how? It doesn't seem like you have a plan to address it yet, and with, uh, the new buildings coming in, I understand your dad will answer those questions, but I, I'm assuming, will you be still handling the operations?
Yeah, I'll be handling the operations, yeah.
Okay, so now even more cars may come, is that correct? That's anticipated, right? On the streets, there'll be more cars?
On what basis?
Less parking spaces?
I mean, it's about the same, right? Yeah, parking spaces go down, the street parking goes up.
Okay, how will you address that?
So like I mentioned to the, the previous questioner, right, um, it's sort of the same trajectory that we're doing now, right? Continue to, uh, you know, ferry cars and, and, you know, enforce, being, you know, respectful when it comes to parking and mindful, and working with the police, working with the neighbors.
Okay, great idea with working the police and the residents. Let's say in the future, and I've seen this in other townships, if only residents can park, and I'm hoping the residents can proceed with that, if only residents can park around their area, how will you address that? And resident permits within the resident areas?
If the township decides to go that route, then, you know, I don't see why we wouldn't cooperate with them, right?
Excellent, thank you, I appreciate it.
I have a couple of questions.
Could you state your name?
Sorry, my name is Samir, Samir Rana.
And where do you live?
I live in Parsippany, uh, 143 Carlton Drive.
Thank you. What's your question?
Uh, my question is, um, I have a couple of questions. So you mentioned like you and supposedly there's a team of people who almost it sounded like it, I perceived it to be like a managing of traffic which is coming in as a glut gets formed, as more cars come in. Don't you think that's a kind of managing or controlling of traffic which is traversing NJSA 39480, which prevents private citizens from managing or controlling traffic? It's only the police officers or the police department which is supposed to manage if there is like an overcrowded situation.
It's private property, right, so I think.
No, but you just now mentioned that your congregations park as of now in Preston, and just, you know, a few moments ago, according to your testimony, it, it sounds like from everything that you've mentioned, with the project getting approved supposedly, it'll start spilling over into not just Quimby, but I'm almost anticipating Leonard and all the other streets, right? So it sounds like you're gonna have to put more, more boots on the ground to manage the traffic. And firstly, that is illegal, right, as private citizens should be doing so. So how do you, how do you suppose to manage the traffic or the congregations or the affiliates coming in with the project on and your congregations? And let's say a day like Ramadan.
Well, Samir, a few points. Um, one, uh, you know, we have a good relationship with the, you know, Parsippany Police, and they're aware of what we do, right? We haven't had any issues with them saying, you know, us telling people to park on one side or telling people not to block driveways is illegal. So as, uh, you know, far as their interpretation of that law goes, it seems like we're in the clear. And if not, then we're more than welcome to have the discussion. And, you know, when it comes down to it, right, if we need to get more volunteers and more boots on the ground, we.
No, that's, that's my question. That's precisely my question, that these boots on the ground and private citizens managing the parking and the traffic situation is against the law. It's really the police officers who should be doing that, and maybe now it's manageable and now the police is okay. But what if, you know, as you just mentioned, and it clearly is anticipated, that the number of, you know, attendants, attendees, as well as the residents all put together, they continue to increase, this becomes a bigger problem, as Davul also mentioned before me. So how do you manage to mitigate that?
Like I said, we'll increase the number of volunteers.
My question is around, like, just, just so I'm clear, my question is around private, private citizens managing traffic on South Beverick and the by streets, by lanes.
Samir, brother, I said, we have a relationship with police already, and they haven't indicated anything that we're doing is illegal.
No, no, I'm talking about like the future. I mean, right now, the entire discussion today is about.
Right, because we have, thankfully, no shortage of volunteers.
No, no, so my question is exactly pertaining to the volunteers trying to manage the traffic situation. That's, that's my question. That they should not be doing it. I mean, I've been in social functions where I've been told by the local police department that, sir, you cannot, I actually had donned the, the Florson shirt, and I've been told that you're not supposed to do that. So are you saying that you're gonna have to have, you're gonna have an arrangement with Parsippany Police? That they'll somehow nominate you guys as, you know, the ones who can, who can control? But, I mean, you'll have to amend, we'll have to amend NJSA 39480 for that? Okay, let's move on to my next question. I clearly see like, I have been a resident of Parsippany 24 years, and thankfully I've been a cyclist all around the town. And I can vouch that the amount of honks and the amount of risk I have perceived while cycling on that stretch of South Beverick Road is the highest.
What's your question?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just preparing a background for it. What, and I'm telling you, so basically it's a, it's a treacherous stretch of road where I have seen the affiliates actually walking, and I feel bad for them. Who assumes the liability if anything were to happen to the affiliates while coming into the center and getting out of it? And I've seen an awful lot of affiliates, you know, walking on that, that stretch of road. Who assumes the liability if there's, you know, God forbid, some incident, some accident?
Are you asking what happens if somebody gets hit while crossing South Beverick Road?
That is correct.
I imagine that the driver that hit that person would assume liability.
But what if it's a hit and run?
What if anybody gets hit anywhere and it's a hit and run?
No, but this is specifically, the, the risk is being increased, right? And we know that, you know, it's, it's within our control, and we, if we still allow, then it becomes like, for instance, Troy Road and, um, the, you know, Beverick Road, that intersection is very vulnerable. I've seen like accidents happening virtually every three months. So I'm just talking about these pain points, when we know these pain points exist, why do we, why are we adding one more without any kind of oversight? So basically, who assumes? Is ICCC gonna assume the liability from such incidents occurring?
No, if somebody uses their car to hit somebody, ICC is not going to assume liability.
Oh, cool. That's the only question. The last question, have you assessed what the impact on the property prices of all the other residents is gonna be with this project coming in? Do you think it'll have a positive impact or a negative impact?
Personally, I have not done that analysis, no.
Okay, those are the only questions, thanks.
Thanks, Samir.
Hello, my name is Bina Shah, and I live in Parsippany on Quimby Court. Now, according to them, they are saying that the prayer starts on Friday afternoon, but it seems like from the morning that they're blocking our driveway.
Do you have a question?
The question is that, that what time actually the prayer starts? And before that, the parking, our street is being blocked, number one, number two.
Wait, hold on, ask one question at a time. What's your first question?
First question is that what, why do we see the activities in the morning, Friday morning? And our area, our street is being blocked by at least two, three, four cars?
So, like I mentioned at the testimony last time, right, the Friday service is really the major service. We have prayers five times a day. You know, we have early morning prayers at around 6:15, 6:20 these days, as well as afternoon and evening prayers. Generally, the afternoon and evening prayers, anything other than our major Friday service, will get about two to 10 congregants, so, you know, it is maybe, you know, at most four, six, seven cars in our parking lot. What you're seeing Friday morning, I would imagine is probably not related to anything that we're doing.
Okay, so actually, your prayers are five times, not two times. You are saying every Friday you meet only in the afternoon, but we see the traffic building up from the morning and right on my street.
That might be a coincidence, because I don't believe.
No, I see the, your, the people coming out from the car, walking on, towards your Islamic Center.
They could be walking somewhere else. I don't know, I just, you know, we, I, there's no reason for anybody to go and park on Quimby Road and then walk 10 minutes to our mosque at 6:00 AM on a Friday. And if they are, that's something that you can maybe take up with them.
I'm talking about 8:00 AM and onwards.
Pardon?
8:00 AM and onwards.
We don't have any programs at our mosque at 8:00 AM on Fridays.
Do you have another question?
Another question is that, that same time, what, the question is the concern, more than the question, can we discuss the concern or is just the question question?
This is your time to ask questions of this witness on the test.
Yeah, but question, my, our concern is associated with the.
There will be a time when you can testify to this board about your concerns with respect to this application. That will come after this applicant has finished his presentation, not this evening, but after the applicant is done with all of its evidence and witnesses. Then, there'll be a chance for members of the public to speak either in support of or in opposition to the application.
Okay, so that my, okay, so I'll take a seat, because my second note question is more of a concern.
Then there'll be, there'll be a time for you to voice that concern.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, my, my name is Esther Kamenevsky. I'm at 28 Schuyler Street, which is sort of connected to Quimby, but thankfully not.
So, what is your question?
My question is, is the mosque tax exempted?
Do you know the answer to that?
Yes, I do, and yes, we are.
Okay, will the connected apartments also be tax exempted?
Normally, I would ask, ask my dad to take care of this, but actually, no, this one, it's not, it's going to be independent.
Okay.
Yeah.
And because that is going to be independent, will you now lose your tax exemption?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's my question.
Hi, I'm Serena Joe, I live on Bordeaux Drive in Parsippany. In the beginning, can you just clarify, I got lost a little in the, you're the executive director of the Islamic Center?
Yes, Islamic Community Cultural Center.
And what is the, you mentioned doing DBA and an IBSA, can you run through that again?
Yeah, on a high level, the, the primary entity is IBSA, Islamic Burial Services Association. It's a nonprofit, was established in 2011. Primary purpose was to assist families throughout, you know, the burial process upon the loss of a, you know, family member, loved one. In 2020, IBSA purchased 879 South Beavick Road with the intent of creating an Islamic Center. Just, you know, partially to assist with the burial processes, but also to, you know, create an Islamic Center. And at that time, a DBA was created of IBSA doing business as ICCC, that's when ICCC was created. And ICCC essentially runs the operations at that Islamic Center. Anything that's not strictly burial-related.
Is what you're the executive director?
Yeah, this is my purview, yeah.
Okay, and so it's the burial services that you have to defer to your father?
Yes.
On, all of that?
Yeah.
So, the first gentleman, and this, you know, maybe something we come, the first speaker did an excellent job. And just to make sure that we keep this for the record, I wasn't here three months ago, but you mentioned that three months ago, you said wastewater was transferred into the sewer. Did you say that three months ago?
Yeah, I mentioned the municipal sewer was where the, the waste products would be, were going, yes.
Oh, so that's very clear, so we have that on the record, but today, you said you didn't know.
I said I wasn't sure exactly the manner of the connection and, you know, some of the more finer details around that process.
But you do know now, you're saying exactly, to his point, it was an excellent point of which one was it? It's three months ago, so it does go into the sewer, is that?
It goes to the municipal sewer, yes.
Into the municipal sewer, okay, so that's, that's good, I'm glad we clarified that. And then, how many burial washings, and you may or may not know this, do we do a week, month, year?
My dad can probably answer that a little bit more better.
Your dad, okay, we look forward to hearing that.
Me too.
The, with regard to the parking, you mentioned that it's only inconsiderate parking? You tried to make sure that the parking's not inconsiderate to the neighbors?
Inconsiderate and illegal, you know.
What would be an example of considerate overflow parking?
Not parking in front of somebody's driveway or mailbox.
But still parking on the street, you know, taking up all of Preston? Inconsiderate, considerate, it's still taking up all of Preston, right?
I suppose, yeah.
Okay, would you want to live on Preston?
I would love to live on Preston.
You would?
Yeah, I could just walk right, right across the street.
Oh, well, that's, that's a good point on your part.
If I don't get hit on the way.
In terms of residence permits, somebody did mention this, this was an excellent point. I assume we're talking like Hoboken residential parking. So, just to drill that down, if these neighbors are able to get residential parking permits, which I do hope they do, what would be the solution when the parking lot is full?
The same way we would do it now, right? If parking, if Preston Road is off limits, the same way South Beavick Road is off limits, you know, either tell people to actually park on Quimby and walk over, which they're probably not going to do, because who wants to do that? Or, you know, they can potentially go somewhere else.
Well, to drill it down, what if every single private residential street has residential parking permits like Hoboken does?
In that case, once the lot is full, the lot is full, you know, take your business elsewhere.
Okay, I do hope that's pursued, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Nicholas Hamiak from Lake Hiawatha.
Do you have a question?
Yes. You said, you mentioned a distance of a quarter mile. You said, when the cars get to be about a quarter mile back, people may leave to go to another mosque. And you also said about a 10-minute walk, which corresponds to the quarter mile. So, is this common to see cars a quarter of a mile up the street parked?
I've seen cars, well, I mean, I didn't get my, you know, measuring tape out, but yeah, it was probably what could amount to be a seven to eight, maybe 10-minute walk. I've seen it before, it's not, I don't know how regular of appearance it is, because generally speaking, I'm not the one that's stationed on Preston, I'm in the parking lot, but I have seen it.
And then you also said that they, they may or may not decide to leave when it gets to that stage of a 10-minute or a quarter mile cars parked. So, my question is, why would someone drive all the way to the mosque for a time ritual and then leave? And go to another mosque to arrive there on time for that same ritual, if I'm using the right term? Sacrament or whatever, I'm sorry.
Prayer, prayer, that's the word, right?
Prayers?
Yeah, yeah. Listen, you know, it's hard to, you know, decisively say what one person may or may not do, right? You know, sometimes I've gone to get coffee and the line was too long and I decided I didn't want coffee anymore, right? So.
All right, yeah, would you say your constituents or congregation are more of a consistent or a random number?
It's, it goes up and down, it's not.
All right, you mentioned two figures. You said the first was 150 to 180, so that's a difference of 30 more cars. You also said this, this second was 80 to 100, that's 20 cars. So, these are your figures, so what, what is, what is the usual? Is it 150, 180?
It can be from 180 to 150, depending on the week. That's what a range is, you know, and that's averages, right?
And not knowing the, the length of a car, but would use 150 cars is a quarter mile?
Well, sometimes, more than one person coming in a car, right?
All right, but your organic solution that you spoke of, it doesn't seem to be working, would you agree with that? Would you agree that your, your organic solution, if it gets up to a quarter mile and a 10-minute walk, is obviously not working? Because you would want to drive there, get there, and be there for the prayers. 180 cars, 180 vehicles.
Can you repeat the question?
The question, I'm questioning your magical, organic solution to this problem if between 150 and 180 cars show up regularly for your first prayer session?
Well, it's 150 people, not cars, number one, right? And it's, you know, I want to just be clear, it's not a solution in the sense we've implemented it specifically, it's just sort of a natural occurrence that it happened. And in that regard, you know, we have seen it working. There are people that, you know, I know very well that used to come and, you know, now go somewhere else, right? I imagine, you know, there's a lot of people I don't know that used to come and, and, you know, go somewhere else because of that, right? And, you know, what ends up happening is your, you know, regulars that consistently come are the folks that, you know, live closest, right? They're not driving 10 minutes away, right? In those cases, you know, they drive 10 minutes the other direction and go to another mosque, right? And, you know, by and large, you know, the numbers seem to support that. I just want to point out, right, that this capacity issue that, you know, we continue to talk about, right, it's only specific to our Friday prayer on Friday afternoons, right, from, you know, 2:00 PM to about 3:40. So, just, just to be clear, right, it's not a daily occurrence, right, you know, two hours out of the week.
Can you tell me of any special attraction that your mosque may have compared to the other mosques that, that would bring 150 to 180 people?
I mean, we're organized, we're clean, right, people can come see me, you know, that's, that's a plus.
Okay, thanks, glad you have a lot of friends.
I'd hope so.
Do you have a question, sir?
Yes.
Identify yourself, please.
Yeah, hi, I'm Bruce Loughlin, L O U G H L I N, I live on 95 Preston. So, I, I did see your brother out directing traffic to park on one side for a few weeks, maybe a month ago or so, a few times. Last few times, I wasn't here last week, but the week before that, and I think the week before that, he was not out there. So, if he's not out there directing traffic now, when you're trying to get this thing approved, what guarantee do you have that someone's gonna be there after this gets approved, that he's gonna be out there directing traffic? Your word?
Well, you know, there's no guarantees in life.
Of course.
But, you know, it, it's certainly possible that, you know, there was a shortage of volunteers, you know, something slipped by, right? He may have stepped away to take care of another issue and came back.
So.
You know, these things are, are complex machines, right? And, you know, we would hope that these hiccups are minimized, especially once, once the, the construction, you know, commences. But, you know, at the end of the day, we're, we're all human, right? We're waiting for an AI robot to stand there and take care of it, but until then, right, we kind of have to deal with, deal with the ups and downs.
You need to take your word for this then, that someone's gonna be out there doing this parking on one side?
You can take my word for it.
I'm not sure how good that word is, to be honest with you.
Just, do you have another question, sir?
Yes, I do have another question. Do you realize how dangerous to even walk on South Beavick and Preston Road even? Preston Road has no sidewalks. When you park on both sides of the road, besides emergency vehicles coming down or can't get down, there's people walking in between cars out in the street, and it's dangerous to your congregants. So, I mean, I don't understand how you could put your congregant, even if you're going slow, at risk. Answer to that.
What was the question?
You put your congregants at risk just by walking down Preston Road when both sides of the street are blocked. They're walking in between cars, they walk obliviously down the street without looking. I have a Prius, so it's hard to hear, it doesn't make much noise. People will be walking right without looking, and I could be going five miles an hour, I could still hit someone. So, I, I think it's dangerous for your congregation to walk up down and down Preston Street when you're both sides of the street.
Do you have a question, is there a question?
Well, that's the, that's the question, yeah. What are you, again, you're gonna do something about that or?
Yeah, I guess we'll keep an eye on it, right? No, I mean, I just, I have a hard time understanding what the question is, right? Yeah, it's dangerous to go and walk there, it's dangerous to walk anywhere, right? Like I said, we try to go and minimize it as much as we can, I've explained it in pretty strong detail. I don't mind, I'll sit down and, and, you know, grab a cup of coffee and go through it one more time. But, you know, at the end of the day, we're, we're doing our best and working with, you know, with what we can have to work with.
That's great, thank you.
Do you have a question, sir?
Yes, my name is Norman Cantor, I live on Farron Drive in Parsippany. Question, do your congregants pay a membership fee to your mosque?
No.
They do not, okay. How are you supported then?
Donations.
Okay, but there is no membership fee?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you. Man, we have, we have not generally allowed second, second bites of the apple, okay.
Well, the next person's coming up, is there a plan for dealing with this?
Good evening, my name is Vijay.
Hold on, so there's another, there's a question coming from the planner.
Is there a plan for dealing with the parking issue while this building was being constructed?
My dad will probably go into those details.
You haven't seen it?
Haven't seen the plans? I, I think there's a plan, I, I imagine there would be a plan, but again, my dad will, will talk about that.
Sir, you have a question?
Hi.
Just identify yourself, please.
Yes, my name is Vijay Namzoshi, I live in 9 Hadonfield Drive. My question is, who owns the current lot and the existing structure on that lot?
The current lot, where?
Where ICCC is located.
IB, IBSA owns the, the lot and the building, yes.
And even the, if the structure is created for residential units, who will own? Will it be still IBSA or?
I'm sorry, sir, could you speak up, please? We're having a difficult time hearing your question.
My apologies, is it clear now?
That's better, just, just continue to speak up, please.
Yeah, so who will own the structure, I mean, who will own the lot and the structure once the residential units are created?
From my understanding, there's gonna be no sale, IBSA will continue to own everything.
Second question, and this is a very basic one, probably it was answered earlier, but I, let me. I let me ask it anyway. So clearly, if I understand correctly, clearly your organization has quite good financial backing. So instead of creating, asking for variances, and clearly a lot of residents have problems with that, why not buy a properly zoned property and do this business over there?
That feels good, but I actually reject your premise that we have good financial backing. We're pretty hand-to-mouth right now, so...
Okay. Let's keep that aside, but even if you don't, in that case, this new residential units will be a commercial enterprise, isn't that correct? You'll have to pay taxes, you'll have to rent out the units.
My dad can answer those details.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I'll reserve my question to you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hi. Ellen Carter, 84 Preston Road. My question to you is that you said that there's only going to be parking issues on Friday, but once the apartment buildings are built and there isn't enough of parking spots for the people who live there, what's going to happen to their cars?
I'm going to defer those details to my dad, but, you know, we're not getting rid of the parking altogether. There's still going to be spots.
Twenty-nine spots, I believe you said. And on Preston Road, there is parking on both sides of the road, not just on one. For a little while, there was, but for the most part, it's on both sides.
Okay. That's not a question, so you'll have a chance to make statements either in support of or in opposition to this application at a later date.
Thank you.
Sir, you have a question?
Yes, I do. Gonzalez, 24 Barber Street. I have a very simple question. You're the executive director for the Islamic Center, correct?
Correct.
Your testimony today has been really focused on dismantling your congregation. If you're a leader of the Islamic Center, you want to grow your parish, why are you saying you're going to put a building out there that's going to diminish that? Help me understand that logic in your role.
Well, dismantling, I think, is a strong word, right? And I think it paints a very negative picture. You know, ultimately, the goal, right, is to, obviously, you know, increase our congregation to have a broader reach. If it comes at the, you know, the damage or, you know, the impact on, you know, our neighbors and creates, you know, a lot of these, you know, legal hurdles and these hardships, you know, that's something that actually supersedes the Islamic goal of going and creating a broader reach, right? Ultimately, you know, the goal for anybody in any sort of position is trying to balance, you know, competing interests, right? And, you know, we try to do that, right? We continue to, you know, provide, you know, a weekend school, you know, an afternoon program where kids can get dropped off, you know, Friday night stuff with some of the, you know, the kids and stuff, right, in their teenage years. And, you know, that's ultimately going to be, you know, the direction of focus that we take going forward, right? Where instead of, you know, building vertically on Friday afternoons to try to go and jam people in, there's ways to build horizontally. So, you know, I don't think anybody's dismantling anything.
Clearly, from your testimony, you are, because you're saying you're going to naturally contract, because you're not going to have the space for people, people are going to want to go to other parishes. If I was an executive director of anything, my goal would be to grow and have greater impact on that community.
So the...
I'm not done.
Hold on.
So my question to you is, what is your plan for the Islamic Center going forward? Is it to shrink it? Or are you partnering with your father to have two side businesses and get kickbacks across the two? Help me understand that.
So a lot of the testimony was specifically around our Friday service, right? And, you know, that's a good applause. You know, there's different ways to go and grow a community. It doesn't necessarily, you know, need to squeeze it into a Friday congregation. And this is, I think, ultimately, you know, it's worth pointing out the differentiation between sort of the common perception of what a congregation is, maybe in, you know, the context of, you know, Catholicism, Christianity, right? Where, you know, each individual is kind of tied to a specific house of worship, right? And that's kind of where you go all the time, right? Whereas in Islam, you know, you don't necessarily have that, you know, tight association where you're married to, you know, the ICCC mosque on South Bevwick Road, right? You know, you can go pray your Friday prayers in Rockaway and then have your kids come to weekend school in ICCC and, you know, have your teenage or 14-year-old go someplace else in Bhutan, right? And that's totally fine, right? And, you know, because of that, right, it gives us thankfully a lot of flexibility on how we want to go and, you know, enhance, you know, the offerings that we have in order to go and, you know, fulfill our vision.
So I still haven't heard the answer to my question is, what is your plan to grow your outreach and impact? All you told me is you're going to send people to other congregations. I'm not hearing that you're...
We're going to continue to build programs like we have been, right?
Okay. Tell me about the programs. I want to hear about what programs you're going to continue to offer or grow to help that congregation grow and bring impact to the community.
So, like I mentioned last time, right? And again...
I wasn't here last time, so...
You know, that's fair. Look, you know, without really getting too deep into it, because I know it's kind of getting up there, you know, we have programs for, like I said, young kids, right, ages five to eight, right? We have a weekend school going from, you know, ages five to, you know, 18, right? You know, the plan is, you know, to have, you know, additional programming for, you know, ages beyond that, right? Going into, you know, your early, late teens, early twenties, right? We have, you know, family nights that happen, whatever, once a month, right? Increasing that to twice a month, right, is certainly within scope, right? You know, creating more, you know, regular classes for adults in the evenings, right? Which, again, we've done those in the past, right? We'll continue to do them. You get maybe, you know, 10 to 15 people, right? No impact on parking. But the point is, right, you know, there's a lot of ways to go and do that, right? And, you know, I don't mind sitting down and going through our entire five-year plan with you. I just don't think this is the best place to do it.
Yeah, and so, but once again, don't you think it's harder to actually grow a congregation if you're limiting it, limiting this...
I'm about to get sniped right now.
So, but don't you think it's going to limit your ability to actually implement those programs? Because, oh, hey, the ICC, if I said that correctly, it's always hard to park, it's always hard to get there, you know, I don't want to even go there. Why would you be able to grow? So to me, my view is, once again, as an executive director, you should plan a little bit more around that. So that's why I'm asking you to really tell us what that is, but I'm good. No more questions.
So I just want to get something here, because when the last questioner asked about the congregation and its growth, I believe your answer was, our goal is naturally to expand a congregation, which is, I would totally agree with you. I think that's what organizations try to do. So what I hear that is, I hear you have a problem with the size of your congregation as it is now. By growing it, it would just naturally make that problem worse. Your intentions could be totally admirable. Even some of your answers, you know, make total sense. Let's try to get them to come another time. Let's try to do these things, but that doesn't make it work in that spot. It could still make a problem that's a problem a worse problem.
What was the question?
Really wasn't a question. I just wanted to get on the record that you said your goal is naturally to expand the congregation. So if you're, naturally, you want to expand it, to me, that just makes the problem that is bad now worse later.
So, you know, I think there's a conflation going on between the people that come on Fridays between 2:00 and 3:40 and anybody who comes and takes part in any program that we have, right? And, you know, being in one group doesn't necessarily imply that you're in the other, and vice versa, right? You know, I don't see why we can't, you know, continue to build our programming and, you know, have people come, you know, throughout the week, right? And then just simply deciding, hey, you know, it's a madhouse on Fridays, I'm going to go somewhere else. That's totally fine, and there are lots of people that I know that do just that, right? So, you know, I've seen it work. I, you know, can't imagine, you know, it not continuing in that direction.
Okay. Sir, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Yeah. My name is Yash, 15 Ulysses Street, Parsippany. The question that I have is that, there's, I heard that there's a church near to your Islamic Center, right?
Yes.
Have you done any case studies around how they are managing the traffic, how they are doing it, and why can't you do it in your Islamic Center?
No, we haven't done any case studies, but from what I've been able to tell on cursory glances, their congregation or the people that frequent their, you know, organization are a fraction of the people that, you know, frequent ours.
So that means that your Islamic Center anyways is not capable of handling that much people, correct?
I didn't say that, no.
Exactly, that is what, because if you see that there are other religious places around this in Parsippany, right? We never had those issues in those areas, but why do we have only issues in this area?
Are you asking, that's your question, why we're having the issues and other?
Yeah, yeah. Why don't you, why didn't you study how they are managing the traffic, how they are managing the people? I mean, this has been coming every time, whenever we have these conversations, but if you have not done any work on that, how can you expect things working for you?
Yash, by, it's not necessarily case studies, right? But, you know, it's not a problem that anybody has if they don't have the numbers to fill up their lot, right? That's, I think, the bottom line, right? And I can only speak for, you know, next door, right? Just because they're in proximity, right? But, you know, generally speaking, you know, they're good on parking because, you know, they're good on numbers, right?
So you are pretty good on parking and you are not good on numbers, then?
I think I've explained it pretty extensively. You know, our numbers are, you know, are where they are, right? And our parking is where it is.
Yeah, so then, okay. That's one of the issues.
Okay. Ma'am, do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Can you identify yourself, please?
My name is Mady Erickson. I'm at 906 South Bevwick, we're neighbors.
Hi.
Hey. So I just had a question. One thing that you had said, one thing that you had said was, you know, the Friday growth isn't necessarily your focus, because people can go elsewhere and it's organic. You had said there were other programs, some of them, which you had said was the weekend school and the family nights and the classes for adults, and then I think previously you had said like weddings and celebrations, right? So my question is, we talk a lot about Friday, but with these other events that come about and getting the new apartment, do you foresee any problems with traffic or parking or over-congestion with those events since you're growing horizontally as opposed to just on Fridays?
I don't anticipate those being impacted, just simply because they're so far off from being a problem right now, that, you know, I can't imagine they quadruple in size, you know, even with whatever reduced parking that would come from the development.
And my other question was, I know a lot of people were saying, can you think of it a other way? Have you ever thought of trying to find a parking lot or a location elsewhere and busing the, or having like a van, you know, driving the people in so that there's not so much congestion? It's just that, it's a thought.
Yeah. No, no, we've considered it, right? We have employed it for one of our Eid holidays this past year. It went pretty well. You know, generally, that sort of setup is less ideal for, you know, what could potentially be a five-minute prayer versus, you know, a more protracted service like on Eid mornings, right, where you're there for like an hour. But yeah, you know, it's a good suggestion, and, you know, if there's a good fit for it, we'll definitely explore it further.
And I would imagine that would be something you might look into for like when you have Ramadan or like a big celebration, or where there's, where, say, my church and Ramadan end up meeting at, have the same time, so you're going to have a lot of traffic and a lot of stuff, I would think. The busing in or van might be better.
Right. Yep. No, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sheppis, do you have any further questions of your witness?
No, I think he's said enough.
Okay.
I mean, that's a good one.
Understood.
Talked for over an hour and a half.
Okay.
Got to fall asleep on the way home.
All right. You have another witness?
Yes, we do. So the last time we were here, a question was raised as to existing conditions in the facility as it exists today. So since the last presentation, the project architect prepared a plan that was submitted to the board about a month or so ago, and he's here this evening to talk about just the existing facility and the square footages and the rooms. So joining us right now is Mr. Accardi. He is the project architect. He was previously sworn, placed his credentials on the record. We could certainly reiterate that, or we can just remind him of his oath.
You understand that you're still under oath, correct? And nothing's changed with respect to your licenses, correct?
Yes, sir. Mr. Accardi, you heard my opening comment relative to your presentation here this evening. You were present at the meeting when questions were raised as to the existing facility, is that correct?
That's correct.
And your office has submitted a plan entitled, I guess, existing conditions or an existing condition plan as to the existing facility, correct?
That's correct.
So why don't you tell us about what this is, what it represents? Maybe you can briefly walk us through the square footages and tell us about the building as it exists today and where the addition is proposed.
So the, so where are you at? So I'm looking at drawing A7B, which is the existing first floor. Sorry. For the purposes of this meeting, I put larger plans on two boards. I think what you're looking at is both plans on one sheet.
Okay. So the date on what we're looking at, just to make sure it's the same, is I've got a date on the drawing of September 10th, 2025, and a date stamped received September 11th, 2025. It looks like we're looking at the top, second floor.
Right. So we'll start with the top plan there, which is the upper level. It's a two-level building. The upper level is approximately 8,500 gross square feet. South Bevwick Road is to the left-hand side of the drawing, okay? On that, we have the main entrance into a lobby. We have an ablution room, which is a ritual cleansing area. We have restrooms and we have a kitchen. Going towards the right on the plan, we have a community hall, a social hall, that is approximately 38 feet by 71 feet, 2,700 square feet roughly. We have a storeroom off of that. And then further to the right, we have the main prayer hall, 38 feet by 47 feet, and that's separated from the community hall with a curtain. Off of the main prayer hall, we have the prayer area. This is one with chairs for people needing seats. Along the other side of the building, there's a hallway that's connecting these rooms and leads to a stairway which goes down to the lower level.
Mr. Accardi, just for purposes of maintaining a clear record, since this is slightly different than the plan set because you broke it up onto separate sheets so that it'd be a larger exhibit, would you please mark this, I believe is exhibit A3? I have up to A2 presently.
That sounds right to me. And just put today's date on it, please. And then just have to leave that with Nora.
And just tell us exactly which level A3 represents.
A3 is the upper level.
Of the existing building.
That's correct. So I'll go on to the second board here. Keep that A2 as well.
Wait, before you get to the second board...
I'm sorry?
Is, before you get to the second board, is the proposed addition connected through the second floor or the first floor?
It's connected both.
Okay. Where would it connect on A3?
On A3, it's on the right-hand side of the plan, on the lower right-hand, where it says down the stairs to door B. That's where it's going to connect into the first residential level in the addition.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Moving to the lower plan on the sheet you have, that's the lower level.
Why don't you mark that as A4?
We have an A4 already.
This lower level, I'm going to start with the right-hand side of the plan now. This is where it connects with the existing building.
Is that ground level?
That's ground level. There, there's a sloping site from South Beverwick Road down to the parking lot at the rear.
Okay, so this is where, if I recall the testimony, maybe your previous testimony, this is where that drop-off area is going to be?
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, where those parking places are gonna be removed?
That's correct.
Okay.
So on the lower level, you'll be coming through where it says door B into a lower-level lobby, and there'll be a stairway up to the, uh, to the upper level. Um, again, this is existing conditions now, so it's not shown here. Uh, there will be elevator access in the new addition, so it's fully ADA accessible. The majority of the rooms on the lower level are classrooms. There's some utility rooms, there's restrooms, and there's offices.
Mr. Akardi, the elevator that's proposed, can you show us on exhibit, uh, A four where approximately that would be located?
So where you see on the upper right-hand corner of this plan, the IBS, IBSA office, it's outside of that area.
Would that elevator be able to be utilized to provide access to both floors in the existing building?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Is there presently an elevator that serves this building that would enable people to get from one level to another without having to take stairs?
No, there are not.
So in essence, the elevator then would make this building more accessible?
Completely, completely ADA accessible, yes.
Can't hear you.
Yeah, the building will be, uh, there will be new elevator in the new addition, which will make the building ADA accessible.
Okay, I don't have anything else from Mr. Akardi this evening.
Um, on the A four, there's a notation, upper right-hand corner, outside restroom. Do you know what the purpose of that is?
Um, I know, know it's a kind of a recent addition, maybe the, uh, the owner of the property can, uh, testify to that.
I have a question. The elevator will be outside of the IBSA office?
Uh, yes, yes.
Thank you.
And was there some conversation?
Is there any space in the existing building being kind of repurposed as the, the two buildings now are joined?
Uh, no, everything you, other than the connection, the lower-level lobby on the right-hand side of A four is gonna get modified slightly where the new addition is gonna, um, hook into it. But no, every other room, as you see here, is gonna remain as-is.
Do you know the use of the classrooms when?
Uh, I do not, no.
That would be the father, I guess.
That's right.
Wasn't there some conversation last time about elevators and the size of elevators or something?
Yes, there was.
And whether or not it was big enough to fit, I guess, a stretcher?
Wheelchair.
Yes, it's, it'll be ADA compliant wheelchair and stretcher, uh, sized.
Okay.
And Mr. Akardi, I believe there was an intimation from one of the board members as to the location of the elevator and its ability to be accessed from, let's say, common areas in the existing building. Will the elevator be accessible to common areas in the existing building?
Uh, yes, it will be.
And how's that gonna happen?
At the, the first residential level will be connected to the direct connection, uh, to the upper level of the existing building.
So you said that it's outside of the IBSA office?
Right.
Could you show us where? Because it's not on the plan. The, no, I know the office is there, but the elevator?
Yeah, because this, this is existing, right, Mr. Akardi? You didn't show the elevator.
Right, this is, this is existing, right? That, that's a separate exhibit.
Okay, can you point to it where it's going to be, I guess, on the non-existent? Right next to the bathroom?
So where's it gonna, where's it gonna end up on A three, the second story? Where's the elevator gonna?
On A three.
On A three, where's it gonna be?
The elevator is over here, and then there's a hallway that connects.
Oh, okay. There's another hallway on the outside of the prayer hall.
That's correct.
So that's part of the expansion?
Right, gotcha, okay. What's the total size of the community hall and the main prayer hall put together?
Well, let's see. The community hall is just a rounded up, a couple of square feet, is twenty-seven hundred square feet. And the, the, uh, main prayer hall is, say, seventeen ninety. So that's a four thousand, a little under four thousand five hundred square feet.
Total?
Yes.
And is it your understanding that when that partition is removed, sometimes that entire area is occupied by worshippers, correct?
Um, I cannot testify to that, I don't know. My understanding is everything takes place to the right-hand side of that curtain in the main prayer hall.
Well, my understanding of the prior testimony was that the women generally stay on the community hall side and the men are on the main prayer hall side, is that?
That'll have to be testified to.
Okay.
Just a question, part of the reason for the floor plan, um, request was that the, uh, the documents to date, which include the site plan, the traffic report, and the planner's report, all calculate the existing parking requirement based upon, uh, one space for every three seats. Uh, we found out at the last meeting that there are no seats, and the ordinance specifically calls for a different calculation to calculate the required parking. Are we gonna see revised documents that calculate it properly?
That will be testified to in another witness.
Are we gonna receive revised documents?
I would anticipate. I would say yes.
Any questions from the board?
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna do the same?
Will we have testimony as to the exterior of the proposed building? It's look, are we gonna do that later?
Oh, I did that in my last, uh, yeah, I mean.
Okay.
Did you, have you testified about that since the plans were revised?
Yes.
Okay.
You can touch on that now, Ms. Chadwick, there was, uh, a colored rendering attached to the plan set, so we might as well show everybody again. It's been a while.
Oh, yeah, I remember.
And as that.
This is, this, just to make sure the record's clear, what are we looking at here?
This is a, uh, a rendering, we're looking from the, uh, all right, give me one second. Looking from the, uh, the south, and, uh, this is the, uh, excuse me. This is the existing building at the far left of the rendering, everything from here out is the new construction.
And that was something that was previously submitted, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And nothing's changed on this?
Nothing's changed. The only time this changed is when we went from, uh, three, uh, four stories down to three stories.
Okay.
And this is a three-story that we're looking at?
That's correct. Two stories residential over open parking.
So the exterior of the proposed building will be consistent with what the mosque exterior siding?
Yes, it'll be, um, stucco and then some, um, metal panels like the composite wood panels, just for detail. And the existing building is stucco.
And refresh my memory, because I can't count that high, but how many parking places are there in this drawing underneath the building in your plan? I, I don't see a number listed here anyplace.
Yep, oh, I'm just.
Twenty-three, thirty-seven.
I'll count to thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
If I miscounted.
Not. How, how do you come up with that number? I'm looking at one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven stalls.
What sheet are you looking at?
I'm looking at the same sheet he's got up here.
Yeah, look at A, the next page, A one. Right, is that what you're referring to, A one?
It is forty, uh, I'm looking at A one. It's forty spots underneath the building.
Forty-five?
Forty.
Forty, okay.
Well, does that include the three at the drop-off or do you take those off?
No, you took those off.
Okay, I, I, I'm, I'm a little thick tonight. So this, I see there's forty spots on this one chart. When I'm looking at this picture though, that you're testifying to tonight, and I'm looking at the number of stalls down, down there, there are nowhere near forty stalls.
That's just an image of a general look of the building, the?
It's an image of a general look of a building without a complete parking picture?
That's on the site plan. The site plan has the parking. Mr. Walker's site plan has the details on the parking.
I got that, but why doesn't the picker, picture show what it would look like?
Because it's on the site plan.
Okay.
I don't mean to be facetious, but it, it's a rendering of a building, it's, it's supposed to be.
The rendering of the building which houses the parking below it is not accurate.
Yeah, but you can't see the parking because it's on the building.
Okay, all right. Looking at all that's there.
That's why it's on the site plan.
Any other, any other questions?
Yeah, I would just ask Mr. Akardi, now, Mr. Akardi, we know that based on your presentation this evening, exhibits A three and A four, that the existing building is two levels, correct?
That's correct.
And the building addition that you're showing here this evening is three levels, parking with two residential levels above, correct?
Correct.
Now, how do the roof lines match up as relates to the existing building and the proposed addition?
The roof lines of the two, the addition and the existing building match.
Now, how could it be if one's two levels and the other's three levels?
The, um, the, uh, upper level is a double-height space in the existing building.
So as it relates to the architectural edifice when seen from the street, will the addition protrude above the existing building?
The only thing that's gonna protrude above is the elevator shaft by about four feet.
As far as the parking goes, if we have any questions, is this the person who's gonna testify?
I don't think so. I think you best left to the site engineer who's.
Because didn't we have a whole thing about that last time?
And then we'll have the traffic engineer as well.
Okay.
Um, I had a question in my letter of August seventh. Um, Mr. Akardi was here last, he indicated that the, uh, when questioned about the seating in the gathering room, which is in the addition, the new gathering room, had eighty-eight seats. Um, he indicated that, uh, part of the intent of the gathering room was to provide an area to socialize after the prayer services. Um, but on the website, it, and then I believe in our, the last witness testified the last meeting, uh, said that, um, congregants are urged to leave after the, after the meeting, after the service. And I was wondering if that ever got straightened out to which is which here? Do we have eighty-eight seats for people to come in after the meeting or after the services? Or are we sending people home after the services?
The next witness will be able to answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from our board members?
Okay, now it's the time again for questions, uh, from the, from the public, uh, on this witness. Again, we're gonna start with, uh, with Mr. Mills, who represents, uh, one of, uh, the neighbors. Go ahead.
Thank you, and I did forget to, um, thank the board members for their time, as always in this very nettlesome case, uh, for the architect. I'm sorry I didn't have an opportunity to really preview the plan that you've put up there. Starting with the elevation to your right, is that, is that document the same document that's been consistent throughout your presentation?
Uh, yes, it has. It's not the one we started with, but why did, we didn't get to testify that the meeting was canceled and in turn between that meeting and the next, we changed the building from four-story U-shaped building to three stories.
All right, that, that was my question. So you've reduced, you physically reduced the height and that reduction generated the new elevation?
That's correct.
All right. On which two levels is the residence constructed, connected to the mosque?
It, well, technically all the levels are because you have the elevator, but the, the, the lower, the first residential level is the one that connects directly into the mosque.
All right, and how are the other two levels connected?
Elevator.
All right, so the elevator opens to the mosque?
That's, no, the elevator is independent outside of the existing building. It's connected via an outside hallway, a new hallway in the addition.
All right. Do you have an understanding that you can pass on to us of what the relationship will be between the residence portion and the mosque portion? And by that I mean, is the resident portion going to be sequestered from the mosque or will it be open at all times for residents to pass back and forth?
That'll be testified by the owner, to by the owner.
So the doors that you've proposed will be lockable doors?
Uh, probably not, unless it's a policy that they need to lock down at a certain point.
What changes, if any, and again, forgive my lack of knowledge, occur, are you proposing to the actual mosque itself?
We are just gonna be modifying the existing hallway. The new addition is to the right of the, or to behind the existing building, and there's gonna be a new hallway which connects to the existing hallway. That's the only, uh, connection.
And what is, why are those modifications proposed?
To permit ADA access between, uh, between the addition in the rear and the mosque itself.
Does the resident component have sufficient fire egress on, on a standalone basis?
Yes.
You've described some amenities in the resident component, is that correct?
That's correct.
And just for my information and edification, those amenities include, did I hear you say, a prayer room in the residence?
Um, there's a, a, a gathering room to have meals or to socialize, um, with, with, you know, congregants and, and the residents.
What other amenities would be present in the residential piece?
Let me just refresh my memory. Uh, we have, uh, laundry on the second residential floor. Common laundry.
Are there other common areas proposed in the residence?
No. Uh, there's a trash utility room, there's some, uh, utility rooms, but a common area for the residents, no.
Just that one?
That's correct.
With that common area, do you think provides sufficient reason for residents to invite friends over to meet with them and be present?
Sure.
Socialize?
Sure.
Yeah, all right. So it might have a propensity to increase the number of visitors to the residential portion, is that correct?
At times, yes. Yeah, I know, that's gonna be testified to by the owner, the interaction between the mosque, congregants, and the residents.
Would you have an understanding as to why you were directed in your plan to include the common gathering area?
Uh, again, you know, I really would defer to him for his, his testimony.
Are there any changes, I'm sorry, the changes that you've described of the mosque as being for purposes of ADA compliance, uh, are they in any way likely to increase attendance at the mosque?
Uh, no, I would say no. It's gonna make attendance easier for those in, maybe in a wheelchair, but I don't think it's gonna bring people in.
The elevator structure, it's not, does not show on your exterior elevation then, does it?
That's correct.
And is there a reason you chose not to show it?
No, it's just, you know, when we do renderings, this one tells the story of the materials and finishes. We typically don't do renderings on all sides of buildings.
Under local ordinance, would I count the, uh, additional height of the elevator enclosure in terms of calculating overall height of the structure?
No, that's not counted.
And that's pursuant to local ordinance?
Yes. Stair, bulkheads and, and such are not counted.
All right, with the, uh, if I were to count the, strike that. You indicated that the, uh, addition, what is the, let me just phrase it this way, what is the current projected height for the residence in feet?
The existing and proposed top of coping is thirty-two foot seven and one quarter inch, elevation two sixteen point seventy-seven. And that's taken from the existing, uh, lower level of the building. Of the existing mosque.
The elevator projection would be an additional four feet, did you say?
Uh, pro, actually here, it's, uh, I'm sorry, two foot eight and one quarter inches.
I'm sorry?
Two foot eight and one quarter inches.
Above the thirty-two feet?
That's correct.
Is the height of the residential piece, uh, AGL, or I saw you use the phrase the L G, M S L, meaning mean sea level?
I, I, you know, this, these spot elevations and things will have to be, uh, testified by the civil engineer, site engineer.
Does the residential component take advantage of a lower elevation of the terrain to the rear of the mosque?
No, it does not. The, the underside of the building gradually gets larger, the, the parking area gets taller as you go to the back.
And you indicated, and under questioning from the board, that the parking calculations will be gone through by the site engineer?
Uh, yes, site and traffic.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there, are there any members of the public that have questions of this witness on the testimony that he has given this evening? Come forward. Again, we, he, he previously testified about the new set of plans, so please limit your questions to the testimony that he's provided this evening. And just identify yourself, please.
Burton Ismerg, Parrot Drive in Persibeni. Um, if I recall, the last time, uh, three months ago, you had stated that there was an addition of twenty-nine. there was an addition of 29 parking spaces, and now you're stating 40. Maybe I misunderstood something.
I didn't, I don't believe I testified to anything with parking last time. The 40 spaces is just what's under the building. It's not limited to residents in the building. That's just what the underside of the open parking can bear in terms of parking spaces.
Okay, and how many parking spaces will disappear? Because it was stated that the building occupies parking spaces now. How many parking spaces will disappear?
I don't have that information, because the existing has some 45-degree angled spaces. These are all perpendicular, so I would have to compare the civil drawings with mine. The only part of the building that is touching, or taking away potentially any parking is the, is the required stair that needs to come down from the building. And, and the utility, oh, no, not utility rooms or elsewhere. Just the stair that comes down from the upper floors.
Okay, thank you.
Please identify yourself.
Nikomiak Lake Hiawatha. Can you tell me where the dumpsters for waste and the source separation will be located in your...
That's all on the civil engineering drawings.
Civil engineering?
That's correct.
Alright, okay.
Jalpeesh Taker, 91 Longport Road, Persippany. I have a few questions. What studies did you conduct before finalizing this design? Any studies?
We went through a number of options. We had the four stories. We changed the shape a few times. We went to this building. We changed the shape a couple times, so that, I mean, that's our, just our normal practice in, in architecture is to...
And what prompted the changes that you have made versus the prior design that was proposed?
There was a perception that four stories was just not, it was just too much for the property, so we went down to three. Then, we decided, you know, if, if this, again, this will be testified to later, to bring the residents closer and actually connect them to the building, so if there's elderly residents there, or people with disabilities, that they can more easily go and pray with the buildings connected. So that was kind of the evolution of, of the shape of the building to where we are now.
So you have reduced the height, that means the horizontal spread has increased?
I couldn't say that for sure, but I do not think so.
Because your apartment count more or less remains the same?
Yes, we never really, since we abandoned that first four-story scheme very early on without even presenting to the public here, so I don't, I don't recall the comparison between the two.
So that means your number of parking that were proposed earlier have reduced further?
I don't have that answer.
How many fire trucks can go around the building? Was that put in mind before?
I think that's probably going to be the site engineer, and, and again, the testimony that this witness has given has been, tonight has been limited to certain things, so if you could limit your question to the testimony that he has given tonight.
Because the, the design is put in place by the architect, right? So I'm sure those things were kept in mind?
Yes, they were, very carefully by the civil engineer.
And we still don't see the parking spots, or how many parking spots. You have not confirmed that count, what it's going to be the final count of parking?
I don't have that. That's not on my plans. My, strictly about the building.
Have you done analysis of year-on-year growth of prayer attendees since it has opened?
Can you repeat that question?
Year-on-year growth on prayer attendees?
No.
Because if you keep five-year plan in place with apartment, and then the growth that is going to be anticipated, your number of cars, how you even plan to...
He didn't testify to any of this, and we keep telling them...
I understand that. I'm, I'm trying to be respectful of the, of the members of the public that want to ask questions, but as I said, his testimony tonight was very limited. So please keep your questions to the testimony that he gave tonight, which was essentially about a drawing that he did with respect to the existing mosque.
Okay.
Do you have any questions about that?
The design? What the design purpose for? I mean, is it only designed for the prayer meets, or the weddings also, birthday parties? What all has gone behind this design as a thought to accommodate this design?
These are purely residential units.
No, because it is going to be attached with the hall. So this design, I'm assuming, is going to attach with, your apartment's going to be attached with the hall?
Correct.
Right? So if the prayers and the weddings and the birthday parties and everything is going in the hall, and with these 28, 29 new apartments, has that study been done, that what the, how this building is going to keep up with everything that you have thought through?
This building is 28 residential apartments, period. There's no correlation between the two, other than possible socialization after prayer. If there's a family member that lives in the residence with a congregant, that's, that's what this whole project is about.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, again, please limit your question to the testimony that he gave this evening.
Sure.
Okay, and just identify yourself.
Vijay Namzoshi, 9 Harad Field Drive.
Okay.
So you testified last time as well, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
You testified last, last, in the last meeting as well.
So you're starting your question with, "You testified last time that." So do you understand, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but he gave very limited testimony tonight on two drawings he did with respect to the mosque. Do you have any questions about that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead and ask that question.
Okay, so between your last testimony and current, today's testimony, is there any? Excuse me?
What's your question about tonight's testimony?
I'm asking, trying to ask the question.
Haven't heard it.
Okay. So between your last testimony and today's testimony, exactly what has changed? I'm a leave answer, could you elaborate on that, please?
Nothing has changed. This building, the existing building that I testified to last time has not changed at all. All I did was go in and measure the existing building, because some of these square footage is, have impacts on the amount of parking spaces, which will be testified to at a later date.
So, in, in that, keeping that in mind, what is the purpose of your testimony today?
Can I, can I hop in? So, last time he was here, we asked him what the current state of the inside of the Islamic Center was. He came with the plans of the existing building to show us, because that was asked of him last time. So that's what his testimony tonight has been. That's his purpose for being here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, ma'am, do you have a question about his testimony this evening?
I do. Joanne Fisher...
Just identify yourself.
Joanne Fisher, 872 South Beverick Road.
Okay, thank you.
How long do you think it will take to evacuate 28 people that could possibly be handicapped if there's one elevator?
That's, I, I have no idea. I'm sorry.
Well, I think that's a really important point.
We are code compliant with all of our egresses, our two stairs, our fire ratings, fire separations, and elevator, in total compliance with all...
For one, for one trip down, one person? Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Yes, my name is Hank Heller, and I live in Persippany. And I was, I heard the gentleman that, that testified earlier saying that the mosque was, was a, was non-taxed, and the, this, this, these domiciles will be a taxed entity. And I'm just wondering if by connecting the two buildings, will that cause that, to lose that, that, that taxability? Is, is that, is that something that, that has to be thought about?
Is that within your area of expertise? Not my expertise.
No, I'm thinking maybe the attorney that's sitting next to him might be helpful.
I could address it, because it was contained in a letter from Daniel Cassis, the tax assessor, and I spoke to him about his memo, it was submitted to the board. And in essence, what he anticipates doing is leaving the tax exemption on the mosque section and imposing a taxable ratio or assessment on this residential component. He will utilize rents in the area for the basis upon which those taxes will be based. So the residential component will be taxed, and this other section will not be taxed.
Thank you for your help. Appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Sheppas, do you have another witness you want to start tonight?
Seeing nobody else, Mr. Kocar is here this evening to provide his testimony, and perhaps we can get started with him, or is this...
I would just note that it's 9:30. We have a hard stop at 10, correct?
Correct.
We have a hard stop at 10. I'll leave it up to you. He clearly is going to have to come back. I doubt we're going to get it through with him in a half an hour. So I'll leave it up to you as to whether you want to start him and bring him back, or whether you want to just bring him fresh at the next time.
Could I take a two-minute recess?
You can take a two-minute recess.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sheppas is back.
Yes, thank you. Well, and considering the fact that the presentation this evening will have to be continued, and rather than starting a witness and then having to have him come back, my suspicion is if, even if we did that, he'd probably have to start his testimony all over again. So it would seem to make practical sense to start fresh at the next available meeting, rather than starting, stopping, and having to start again.
I think that's, I think that's appreciated, Mr. Sheppas.
Understood. So I guess the next question is, when would be the next time that we could come back?
We're probably going to have to do the same thing we've done previously, which is a regular meeting to...
Right, I'm going to have to call the board and see what's available, what dates are available. So, December 3rd would be the announcement of the new date and new location at 7:30.
December 3rd?
Yes.
And that would be at the municipal building, 1,000, is it 1,001 Persippany Boulevard?
Correct.
So I'd ask that this notice be preserved and carried to the board's next regular meeting of December 3rd, 2025, 7:30 PM, at the Persippany Municipal Building, 1,001 Persippany Boulevard.
And you're going to grant all extensions, correct?
Yes, I grant an extension to time for the board to act until December 31st, 2025.
And you need, we need a motion to that.
May we have a motion, please?
Move.
Second.
Oh, please. Oh, I apologize.
Well, you don't need a roll call, you're just doing all of them.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
I, I want to thank everybody for their time and consideration. I know this is a special meeting, so thank you. Your time is precious, and we appreciate it.
So if, if you didn't understand what's happening, the December 3rd date is just to announce the next date. Okay? Not to hear the case, just to announce the next date.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
You need a second on that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.